Well, good afternoon. It's 2:00. And we're going to call this meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Board of Trustees of Weatherford College. Today is Thursday, January 14, 2021. It is 2:00 p.m. and we're in the Alleene Strain Community Room of the DOS Student Center, which is located at 225 College Park Drive, Weatherford, Parker County, Texas, to consider and act on the posted agenda. Item number one is call to order, which I've just done. We have a quorum present. There are five of us here. And so we do have a quorum and we will proceed on our agenda. We'll first ask Mr. Baker to give the invocation.
Yes, sir. Happy to do that. Please be with me. We're very thankful for another semester, another year. Thank you for getting us through 2020. Thank you for keeping us safe. Thank you for our faculty and staff working hard to bring in new students and existing students. We pray you'll keep them safe this year, be able to learn and progress. And this will be a wonderful year for them and for Weatherford College. Thank you for our board. Please be with them as they deliberate. So in your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Let's stand and I'll lead us in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Be seated. Ms. Worley, do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
We do not.
Thank you, ma'am. Number three, president's report. We have that posted and in it, I'll just mention the retirement of our chief, Mr. Stone, and Chief Stone. We thank him for the work he's given all these years. And we have the employee notices in that report. And we also have the spring enrollment update. Number four, we'll move to the fourth item on the agenda, the consent agenda and financial reports. In that, in four, we have the approval of the minutes, financial reports, approval of 2021, '22 academic calendar, and disposal of obsolete or surplus items. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda and approve it?
That's a move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Moving to number five, consideration possible action, order of election of Board of Trustees, place three, place four, place five. Mr. Baker?
Yes, sir. You see in your packet there, the information sheet. And as Chairman Smith mentioned, we do have three places up for the May 1 election. Place three, which is currently held by Dr. Dixon. Place four, currently held by Mr. Cowley. And place five, currently held by Mr. Carney. The official order of election is attached in both English and Spanish. The college, again, will contract with the Parker County Elections Office. And we just ask that the board approve the call for election for May 1, 2021.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Baker. Recommendation is that the board approve the order of election, May 1, 2021, as presented. Is there a motion?
I say a move.
Second?
Second.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll sign the, I'll sign the order.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Moving to agenda item number six, consideration possible action approved, 2021 through 2026 academic technology and facility strategic plans. Mr. Curley?
Thank you, sir. Some comments about strategic planning generally. The plans are a view from 30,000 feet. As we consider things from that altitude, we know that the devil's in the details. And we also know that if we're planning something that's supposed to give us guidance for five years, that it has to be revisited on a regular basis. And so we look at these, look at this plan and these plans in that light. And today, the only presentation we're going to have is from Huckabee to kind of bring us up to date on the facilities plan. We do that because it's been a work in progress and they've made great strides and have something that I believe is going to be well-earned and appreciated when it's done. The strategic plan as a whole will be compiled into a book that we will talk about in February to look at how it came together and all the different pieces of it. And it's going to be depressing. So with that, I will ask Huckabee to give us a little presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Curley. Again, I'm Mark Berg with Huckabee. I'm the principal in project. This is Mike Kings. He's a planner and designer. He's doing all the work. I want the team back at our office. But as Mr. Curley mentioned, we're here just to kind of give you an update of where we've been and where we're going. And it's amazing to think we started this a year ago. It takes time to put together our master plan. And we've been coordinating that master plan with the college's strategic plan as well through a variety of different ways of meetings, zines, and the admin. A lot of there as well to get to this point. But I'll let Mike talk about this a little bit better.
All right.
And get the word of the beast.
Very good. Thanks, Mark. I apologize for being over here, but I'm tethered with my computer. So I hope you can see it. So as Mark talked, discussed with you, this is one part of the strategic plan is the facilities master plan that we have developed. We start by looking at your current campus. What's, what's there, what's happening? And you can see, you know, the new workforce building coming right here as you come into the main drive off of Martin, right? Just to the east of the main parking. But again, just knowing what you have is where we started and went from there. And I'm just scrolling through the actual pages that you have that was sent to you. So we took time. We, we look at what are, what are the influencing factors that we have to deal with? Of course, well, we've got boundary and easement plans. There's several large easements that cross the property. We need to know where those are. And so we marked those and aware of that. We talk about pedestrian and traffic. How do we want to see the campus proceed in the future? Where are the cars? Where are the, where are the pedestrians going? And that's essentially, the yellow line is kind of pedestrians. That will make a little more sense as we go down into the master plan. Dr. Farmer wanted us to take a look at the hike and bike trails and coordinate that with the city of Weatherford. So this is actually their plan of, and you can see your property. I hope you can. Right in here, here's your property. And how those hike and bike trails just really surround you. So we wanted to make sure we, we were aware of those. We looked at the flood zones. What's, what's happening with creeks and drainage? And you have a large swale coming through the property. Thankfully, it is not in the flood zone. So we can, you know, we're confident that we're not going to be in a 100-year flood plain with anything that we build or that you build. Probably the biggest influencing factor is the terrain of, than the slope of the site. And you can see where we are, we're on the top of the hill. And it slopes down about 60 feet to the bottom, right there at the intersection of the streets of College Park and Martin. It continues down to the creek. So everything up in this area flows down and goes to the creek. On the southern end of the property, it gets high again and slopes down to the creek. So we need to keep those things in mind as we build and as, as you develop, you know, the, the property. One of the big things too for us is, of course, the new workforce building. That has huge impact on the building's upcoming. We felt like that this was going to set the aesthetic for the campus in the future. And so we wanted to include that for whoever is looking at the master plan, that they understand that this was one of the driving factors as you proceed on. So we had a great visioning session in this room invited before, for the holidays. Invite, I think it was in September, wasn't it? Invited everybody here to talk about what are your goals? What are the goals? We surveyed the board. We talked with Dr. Farmer and his staff and had other admin staff and faculty. These are just some word charts that just talk about the things that were important to you. We needed to know what was important to you. We need, we want diversity. We want to have enriched faculty. We're achieving goals. All of these things mean something in the life of Weatherford College. So we captured all of that. There's actually the meeting ongoing as we were doing it. The outcome of that was that as, as the campus has grown, essentially, the heart of the campus seemed to be moving eastward. You know, we're up on the hill. What I'm, I'm just calling it the academic core, the hill. That things were moving eastward. Things were happening. Student housing has come about. Coyote Central, I'm just, you know, the athletic piece is coming about. And how does all of this work with the entire campus? Well, what it was telling us was that the heart of the campus is moving. And what, what they felt like was key was that we needed to start developing the central part of now what is going to be the new heart of the campus. And that's with student activities. So that was the point. That was what was driving it. And so as we, as we looked at that, we said, well, what does it actually turn itself into? So it's a, it's a student union building. That became priority number one. And as you can see, everything goes to it. The liberal arts, the hill relates to it. Fine arts on the southern end of the campus can be expanded. Relates to the center of the heart. Workforce buildings can possibly be added as we are doing right now. But further additions can happen. Further buildings and programs can happen in those areas as well. So that's where we started with all of that information. And it drove to this solution. The white buildings are existing. And you can see, as you come from the traffic circle, right here. You can see my cursor. And as you come into the campus, the concern was what, what catches our eye? What, what do we see when we first drive into the campus from this main entrance down here? Right now, we see a large parking lot. And that's our impression of Weatherford College. First impressions are very important. So we felt like what we, what needed to happen is a new student union building could possibly be located in this place. And what we want to do is connect with a pathway, a pedestrian pathway, all leading and all points up to the traffic circle and, you know, your historic arch, and create that connection. Now, you'll see as we develop it further, this, we broke the, we broke the master plan into two parts, priority one and a priority two, first five years. So what we're seeing is the first five years and calling it priority one. So the thought is to create a green space, a place where students can have activities, multiple groups can meet. You could, and we're not showing it in this. We haven't really developed that. I mean, I think that's to come. But you could have maybe an amphitheater or something that related to the fine arts right across from that sort of thing. Multiple kinds of things can happen out on this, on this parking lot. Now, it's also possible too, we talked about this, that maybe at this time, we only develop maybe this half of the parking lot. Maybe this remains parking for a short term. But the long term, we'd like to see that entire area converted. Now, so if we do eliminate parking, what do we do? Where do we put possibly a new parking garage right here? Over the top of some of existing parking, which can serve as students come off campus to on. They can park, drive. It's, it's easy on, easy out, right? So that's, that was one of the other items. And the third, third item is identified as new athletic housing. And again, this can be phased. This particular project itself can be phased. We talked about providing 300 beds, 300, for 300 students in the overall. But the first phase, maybe 200, something a little more affordable. But we've got space where we can expand. You are in the planning stage right now of this parking lot. But you're going to need more parking. So we're looking at placing it here. And then the other item that rose to the top was replacing the tennis courts. You know, you just recently, I say recently, in the past year, took the, I'm sorry, took the tennis courts out and placed parking right up here by the gym. So we're looking at where those could go. And in the overall master plan, we're thinking just to the east of the baseball field is a good spot for maybe a tennis center. Anywhere from 10 to 12 courts. Might have a little changing dressing room building, you know, concession restroom kind of thing, and also some parking for it. And it can be connected by a road, by a drive from the parking lot and come around and over and connect to Texas Drive. So that's what we're calling priority one. And then we just did a simple isometric view just to give you an idea of how it could look, you know, volumetric wise. One thing I didn't explain was the student union building would take place of this DOS building here and the student services building here. So those two buildings could be demolished. So what we were looking for, what the faculty and staff were looking for was a central place to do all student services, everything for them that you offer. Dining would be there and all associated student services offices that, you know, that serve that could be in that building. Now, how it looks, we don't know. We're just keeping it very simple, very blocky. But aesthetically, something that would begin to match the new workforce building. It could be a two-story or maybe even a three-story building. As we move on to the next five years, what we're going to call priority two, within 10 years, the additional projects were listed as such that you, at that time, we're looking for, in addition to the Don Allen Health Science Facility, we think just kind of a branch, multi-story addition to it could occur here. We would move the CBRE building, your maintenance building, off the top of the hill down to the bottom of the hill, down here. That's item, or building six. And associated with that, you know, you've got the maintenance vehicles. You've got things like that. We could put up a fence, you know, that hides all of that. But it's important that they have some, some parking available. Now, that, that does take up additional parking spaces. So at that time, again, we were looking at maybe another parking structure could come in at this point. Again, a very good location, coming off of College Park Drive. Very easy to get in and back out. Create pedestrian pathways that connect everything up to the hill. And this would also serve as parking for events in the fine arts building. Now, this is where we would finish up the entrance buildings to what we're calling the heart of the campus. And essentially moving your business administration building there. And right now, those functions occur in this building right here. And then that building could be demolished, as well as the mince building. So all the functions in those two would now go into a building here that actually just, it frames the entrance as you come into the campus. And it brings your attention right to where, where do I need to go when I first come into the campus? I'm not hunting for the business building or the student services building. They're right there. And we believe it will create a very, a very beautiful aesthetic for you. Further expansions then eastward. It was talked about the need for a new gymnasium or coliseum that would seat anywhere from 3 to maybe 5,000. Now, that's a big structure. If you compare number 10, building number 10, to your existing gymnasium, you can see the size of that thing. And we're, we're close to scale. I'm not going to say it's perfect on this, but it's close. So it gives you an opportunity to see exactly how big that is. But associated with that, again, with that many people coming to the campus at one time, you're going to need additional parking. The, the surface parking simply won't take it, even with the two parking buildings here. We think you'll even need another one. So it's, it just takes a lot of parking. And that's why we had the tennis center located how it is. You can see how the road could bend and come around that. And again, and we're trying to be sensitive to the DOS center in this as well. Now, this is a tall, tall structure. But it really felt like this was the best place for it to go. We may look at this, you may look at this as Mr. Curley was saying, you know, down the road in the next year or two, as we, things progress, you say, well, that building doesn't need to go there. Maybe it needs to go over here. And, and you know, we'll modify the master plan for you accordingly. But we felt like it was important to keep a tree barrier, for lack of a better word, around the DOS center. And keep it feeling like you're coming into a forest. That's, that's just a great piece of property over there, just wonderful. So that's priority two. And then you can see, as we pull that up into an isometric view of what the campus could then start to look like with those additions. Now, to end with, am I over 10 minutes?
Yeah.
Sorry. Are we all right? Okay. I practiced this. I really did. Yeah. So we, we wanted to say, well, what about beyond 10 years? You've been here 150 years. We know you're going to be here even longer. What can happen even beyond that point? So then we started thinking about, all right, these are the yellow structures, the light yellow. What's going to happen here? And I think what, what you're going to want to see is replacement of the old struck, the older structures on the campus. Continue replacement of those. Essentially, you know, replacing the building up here on the corner, replacing all of these buildings, replacing the library structure. And it might wind up, now we're starting to create some plazas, you know, for pedestrian traffic. What we'd like to see is that all student parking and faculty parking surround the campus and that it's more of a pedestrian access as you come from building to building, just simply for safety of students as well. But they still need, you know, vehicular service to them. So that's why we're looking at, you know, extending parking around and doing things like that. So there's the opportunity to create new buildings on the top of the hill, new structures on the mid-level section here. And then we're back down to, you know, the lower end of the site as it's created. Possibly even a fine arts addition in front of the parking garage down here. There's space to do that. Or in addition to fine arts and/or more fine arts space here, that again, starts to set and complete that framework, you know, of giving you the aesthetic as you come in to the building, or to the campus. And then that's an overview of that. And again, this might be the time then that you add that third wing or the, the 100 more beds to your athletic housing. So it's just trying to see what, what can happen. And so we were thinking a little bit more and just trying to envision what that entrance way could look like. Now, we're showing the two buildings, the student services building and the business building separate. They could actually be joined by some structure. Even if they're not joined by some structure, I got to thinking, say, well, what's, what's an iconic image of, of Weatherford College? And it's the arch. I do believe it's the arch. Well, I didn't want to replicate the arch just as it is. But I thought, what if you had three arches that had a forced perspective for you as you go up this pathway to the historic arch, you know, that you've got at the traffic circle? The three arches represent the past, present, and future of Weatherford College. So it was just a little something to give meaning to this plaza, to this entrance way, you know, as you come into the campus. And that's what we've developed for you. And I'd be happy to ask, answer any questions. Yes, ma'am?
About the new gym where it's located and it's right up against the DOS Heritage Center. I know they have built a log cabin colony out behind. That doesn't take that in, does it?
I don't think it does. I have to get the plan out and look exactly where it is. We may be able to, you know, shift some things over just to make sure that we're not getting into that. We certainly wouldn't want to. We, we didn't want to, you know, step on their, on their things.
Well, they spent a lot of money moving all these old log cabins to make a little village down there. It's really beautiful.
Yes. Well, we'll certainly take that into account. And so it may mean that we move, move some things around. We also, you know, we want to be sensitive to the neighbors as well. Right across the street, you've got houses. It's like putting a three-story or four-story building right, right here, you know, in my front yard. So I think that one probably gave us more, that building, where to locate it, probably gave us more consternation than any of them. You know, where is it really best located? At one point, I was thinking, well, let's just replace the gym you have. But then if we replace it, what are we going to do for two years while we're under construction?
Yes.
Where will those functions go? Maybe those kinds of discussions need to be more in depth as we proceed. If we feel like, you know, the DOS is not the appropriate place.
I'll ask Huckabee.
Are there any other questions about the master plan for facilities? Anyone?
Beautiful.
All right. Anything else concerning this presentation, Mr. Curley?
I would like to, on behalf of all of us, say thank you for that amount of thought and creativity. Certainly enhances anything that we could imagine. And imagining the future is the first part of getting to the future.
Exactly.
We have to imagine it.
Yes.
Thank you very much for doing that.
Yes, I want to say thank you too, on behalf of the board.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate it. And I think that's something that's been long needed here. I don't, I don't know. I've only been on the board a little over six years or so. But I, I think that particular issue is really important as we move forward because of the growth of Weatherford and how we fit into this, this whole part of the town. So anyway, thank you, sir. You have any other, any other questions or comments, you, sir?
Thank you for giving us the opportunity.
Well, we appreciate all of it. That's a lot of work to get to that point where you can give us the overview like that. Thank you very much.
Have a great day. Thank you.
We, we also have the Weatherford College Academic Master Plan that I just mentioned in, in passing before we got into this presentation. And that's laid out in the document that is part of tab six. Mr. Curley, any comments on that or any questions or comments by the board?
I would tell you that we've got Greg Fritter here to answer any questions may have been generated by the, the part of the plan that, that he created, the, the technology plan. And also, in the, Mr. Andy is available to talk to you about the academic plan if you need any explanations there. It's fairly complete, I think, but certainly available to answer your questions and then ask that you accept these as part of the strategic plans. As you know, the plan is integral to our- As you know, the, the plan is integral to our accreditation. All these pieces are, are requirements as we move forward. And Arlene, with the cooperation and support of many other people, has really put a lot of effort into bringing all these shattered pieces into one place so it's a mosaic that makes sense. So that, to give her kudos for that, definitely. So if you have questions, we have people to, to answer. And if not, then if you make a motion to accept these plans, then that would be good.
Well, thank you. Greg, you have any comments about technology?
Well, as Mr. Curly said earlier, it's a challenge trying to look out and plan strategically, not only for one year, but for five years. And that's especially true for technology. So it was, it was quite a challenge looking at five years. But there's one thing we do know, that students' demand for technology is going to increase. And so our plan was designed around being able to, you know, have the infrastructure in place to be able to deliver that technology to our students and also keep into account the safety and security of their data, as well as leveraging a lot of the new systems that have just finished implementing on campus, like our new ERB, our Student Information System and others. Now that we have those, we really need to leverage the data that they want to provide us.
Anything else, Greg?
No, sir.
Okay. I see Imperial is here today. Did you have anything to add on master facilities or anything about the new construction going on?
Not the master facilities, but I was just here to give an update if, if the board would like to hear kind of what's coming about in the next two, three weeks.
Good. Well, why don't you do that?
Absolutely. Would you like me to?
Yes. I, I apologize because I, I don't remember your name, we're all wearing masks.
John Jones.
John?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, it is sometimes hard to figure out who you're talking to at times. I ran into somebody at, at Home Depot the other day that I've known forever and I walked right past him because of the mask, so. Anyway, so thank you for having me. Hi, I'm John, I am one of the owners of Imperial Construction. Wanted to give you guys just an update of what we've got going on. Our site utilities, like all of our underground, which would be like our water, our sewer, our storm, those types of things, should be, as that should be, I know it will be by the middle of next week, I would think probably at the latest, next Thursday, pending weather, we'll have all those complete on site. The concrete grade beams in section one will be poured tomorrow. So you'll be seeing a lot of action going on down there as well. Then on, let's see, January 21st, I think that's next, that is next Thursday, we, we will be pouring the slab on section one and two, which is approximately 25,500 square foot. So again, that will probably start off very early, just so we can get that finished off mid-afternoon. The remaining part of the slab up to section three, that'll be poured at the end of February. So I think we've got it tentatively down for February 22nd, from what I saw on, on the schedule. Starting on Tuesday, the asphalt that's here on the west side that we have removed, that will be, installation will start and should be done by the end of next week, complete. So we'll be able to move our, our temporary fencing back up to the retaining wall that we have poured probably a month ago. Also, I just wanted to give you guys an update. I had emailed several people that are involved in the construction. I know Teresa received it as well. We do have a webcam now to where you can actually click on a link. And I don't know all of y'all's emails, but if you'll reach out, I'm, I'm saying you'll do this, I hope you will, Teresa. If you would, just reach out to her and she can give you that link where you just click on and you can see, you know, the, the construction going on live. Also, we all, we received 75% documents for the new parking lot that's just north of the softball and baseball field. I'll be in the process of starting working on that. We're going to go through those documents this week and then probably circle back around with our OAC meeting on Wednesday that we have every week with Mr. McCoy and, and the guys with Huckabee, just to make sure that we've got every single thing included. Any questions?
Good.
I really appreciate it. Mr. Curly, anything?
Well, I, you know, again, just a comment. And that is that to have a building of this magnitude that seems to have been staying very, very much on track and also coming in under projected budgets, those are all great things. The, the diligence with, with you people have pursued it, fantastic. It's going to be really exciting to see things going vertical out there and, and it's, it's could be a great mission. And we really appreciate the professionalism that Imperial has exhibited.
Well, I, I appreciate that, but it's, it is a team, you know? It's not just Imperial because I'm, I'm without Huckabee, without the engineers, without Mr. McCoy, we would not be successful. So it's, it's, like I said, it's a team, I preach team with my group internally. But with all of us, it'll be a success for sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Just take a half a minute here to comment about Mr. McCoy. We were fortunate enough to meet him when a visit was made to Victoria College to look at the building that he designed and so forth. And I asked Dr. Farmer, said, can I hire that guy? Because he told me that he started working in an architect's office when he was 16 years old. He's more than 16 now and he's been there all that time. And he has, he has provided the, the guidance that has really contributed to keeping this on, on track, keeping the contracts lined up, getting the obligations of the contractor lined up and followed. So he has been probably one of the more valuable players on this team that are putting this thing together. Just thank you very much for doing that.
All right. Anything else? If not, I'm going to ask, is there a motion to approve the 2021 through 2026 Academic Technology and Ma- Facility Master Plans?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
If that's unanimous, those plans are approved. Thank you very much. Moving to number seven. Number seven is once again Strategic Plan. But this is the 2016 through 2020 Strategic Plan Update. And Mr. Curly, will you lead us through that?
Yes, sir. I, I think that we've actually, we've actually accomplished that. So I don't think we have to go back through it. So far as the demand study and the guided pathways, as we have established over the last several meetings, we would, would accept those reports as written and provided to you.
Right. Plus, there are strategic goals that are set out in each part.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Any questions or comments about that from the board?
It's very thorough, it's good, good, well done.
All right. Okay, we'll move to, maybe where I am.
Number eight?
Number eight, future agenda items or meetings. And what I show there is Equities and Athletics Report, that is a future agenda item. And we will, that will be put on one of the meeting agendas, probably, I guess, at that point. So mentioning that, no action needed on that. I'll ask Mr. Baker in Agenda Item Number Nine, Announcements.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. You can see that we are going to be very busy over the next month. We finally have athletics back on campus after a long wait because of COVID-19. And we have basketball games cranking up as early as January the 16th. You can see that schedule. There may be a little bit of change in that schedule depending on what happens with other teams and the virus. So I, I would encourage you to look at the athletics website, WCathletics.com, and check those games before you come up here, but we're looking forward to that. And also, our 25th Annual Jack Harvey Academy of Exemplary Teachers. Very unusual program that we're very proud to have on our, on our college. And that will be held again at the DOS Heritage and Culture Center. You're all invited, hopefully you've already received an invitation. If not, you'll be receiving one soon. That's on February the 5th.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Thank you. Moving to number 10, we're going to adjourn our open meeting and we'll, in about two minutes, go into our closed session. And we have the, the items in that particular session outlined, as you can see. And so at this time, we will close this meeting, two minutes, go back into our, our closed session. Thank you very much. Order, and we'll move to Agenda Item Number 11, Consideration, Possible Action, Real Property. There is nothing to consider, no action to be taken. So we'll now move to number 12, Consideration, Possible Action, Appointment, Employment, Evaluation, Reassignment, Duty, Discipline, Dismissal of Public Officers Employed. Same thing, there's no, nothing to take up, no action to be taken there. So we'll move to number 13. And is there a motion and second to adjourn?
I'll motion.
Who's second in that?
Second.
Who's the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mac.